Resolution number thirty six, two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, we're gonna hold that till Tuesday, correct? Do we have a special meeting?
Uh, well, if we have a special meeting, I, I got some, uh, different feedback. I was, I'm not sure. We need to verify we're gonna have one, so.
I thought Jan, Jan said, uh, we're sixty, six, you could do six thirty Tuesday, right?
Your choice.
Six thirty.
I thought the-
Tuesday. Dave said six thirty. He's okay.
Well, I have no problem with that.
You said you're okay. I'm okay.
Right.
And the only person we're waiting on is Nick.
I thought you were already scheduled for one of your spots.
No, I was kinda waiting for you because I said everybody else will just, everybody can do it, but, uh, you said you were gonna wait and you can talk to your wife.
I was already.
Okay, so, so everybody's okay for six thirty, special meeting, executive session, correct?
I am at Tuesday. Are you on the safety?
Yeah, but that's-
That's Thursday.
Jan and I.
That's the twentieth.
Well, here's what I was thinking. We did that between five thirty and six thirty. It hardly exists in one day, it's in two days. We're already gonna be here.
You have to check with Chief. Didn't you have?
Well, that's why I was gonna, I was gonna ask him who's here.
Ask who's?
Chief, uh, Black.
Oh.
Really, it's based around him, so if we can put them all on one day, it would make sense to do that. Would you guys want to?
Well, Mr. Demoff said he's gonna meet about an hour or something.
I'll probably leave it.
Well, what are we, are we gonna have, so, yeah, I don't mind either. So, if we're gonna do it, uh, meetings, now are we gonna vote then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have a special meeting afterwards. We're gonna have-
To, 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 to vote?
Yeah. To vote?
Alright.
So, we were gonna hold us until then?
So, just make sure that-
It's on there. Yeah, I'm gonna make sure it's on there.
That Josephine knows what we're going for the purposes of notice.
Right.
Chief Black, he, he's the problem.
Sitting there quietly ignoring Josephine.
Yeah.
They're listening, but there's no reason to. I mean, I, we'll figure that out. Yeah. I mean, I know if the ordinance will go on there.
So, we're gonna hold a meeting afterwards to vote on thirty six?
On resolution number thirty six and then a motion.
Are you sure we shouldn't wait till our next regular meeting for that?
No. I won't be here for my next meeting and we're just gonna go on and take care of this. Everybody was waiting on a report to get in and now the report's in and Mr. Demoff needs, uh, he said probably over an hour.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Can we start at six?
Well, I haven't technically put the type.
I know.
I did that reader.
Okay, so the safety meeting's nine at six thirty.
Hold on. Mr. Black, Chief Black.
Yes.
Would you have a problem if we moved the safety meeting to Tuesday and say five or five thirty?
That'd be fine.
Just let me get your both meetings in one day and get it out so we don't come two days in a row at six thirty. So, is five thirty good for you? Is an hour good for you?
Yes.
Do you need a whole hour?
No, but Janet wants to talk.
Oh, I know.
Oh, well.
So, no, I, I don't. I'll give you some questions.
Well, we should not short change.
An hour good?
Yeah.
Just a case.
I won't be here. I'll, Lieutenant will be here. I'll be in.
Is an hour sufficient for Tuesday?
I think it'll be about four.
What, I know we were talking about the, uh, equipment issue with you and what were you talking about with you?
Uh, I think dispatcher's gonna come up.
Yep.
Well, I saw something about dispatcher in part time, but are you gonna come in with a recommendation about a change in salary or?
I, I think, I think council should be aware of what's going on. We can't get, I just can't. I've been looking forward to here.
Okay, and that's what currently the discussion was supposed to be.
Well, we will, we will do that though, but-
Let's not do it tonight. Let's put it for the meeting.
I'm asking because I wanna know what we're gonna be saying.
Yeah.
I don't think it's all people.
Yeah, alright.
Lieutenant will be here, so I don't think it's gonna be a huge law.
Okay, alright.
Rita, one day is it now? Is it Tuesday or Wednesday? Is it five thirty or six thirty?
You guys, the safety meeting's gonna be five thirty and then, uh, special, uh, council meeting's gonna be at six thirty.
Okay. No amendments to address, it's not executive session, it's to deal with the resolution thirty six.
Well, do you guys all wanna have an executive session with Mr. Demoff to go over the report? Do you have questions or do you want him to just do it on the floor?
Well, going back to that, the question I had when I was trying to allude to is if he's gonna explain to us his findings, we can expect to make a decision immediately following up. I mean, this thing has gone on for many months. I think I'd rather digest what we're being told before I make a decision. I think that'd be fair to give a little bit of time to think about what he's gonna explain to us. Is that unfair to ask that?
Well, I think we've had a long time here, yeah.
Well, right, but these findings could make or break a decision, so, okay. All I'm asking for is a little bit of time to digest what he's gonna tell us.
Well, how much, how much are we talking?
The next meeting will be fine for me.
No, but Rita's not gonna be here. She's, her daughter's graduating on the twentieth.
Okay, so let's, let's do, let's do another special session on the twenty sixth or the twenty seventh.
Right, I don't have a problem if you wanna do that.
And, uh, oh, gosh, wait, wait, wait.
Well, the twenty fifth is-
Okay, so the meeting, I, I'm confused at this point.
This is May, right here.
I know, I know. I'm confused. Is the, are we doing it at five thirty on Wednesday or five thirty on Tuesday?
On the night.
Taking it off there.
Alright, well, see, that's, that's why I'm, I'm not sure if I'll make it on time because I, I have a, a meeting in Columbus.
Oh, well, then, maybe we shouldn't even, no.
Why, if, if, can we do, can we just keep it on Wednesday, the twentieth?
I thought it was, was it on Thursday this time?
No, it was on the twentieth.
Oh, okay.
It was on the twentieth.
Okay.
Can we shift all to Wednesday then with that? If we're already gonna be here, that's why I'm asking.
Right, I, I agree. I, I could do, I could definitely do Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm good with, Wednesday, you're good with Wednesday? Well, Wednesday would only pertain to the Jan for safety meeting.
Well, she'll be.
So, you're good with Wednesday, so then, forget it.
Alright, let's do it.
Forget the twentieth then.
Paul, what's her name?
What?
Paul, what's her name? Did you teach moving numbers? Look, you have this face.
Oh, oh, it's not Paul.
I don't know, I don't know.
Willa Fortune, what's her name?
I don't know. I said Paul. I have no clue.
Sorry I'm late.
I said, I moved that there.
Okay.
And then it's Tuesday, special.
Right.
We're on thirty six, two thousand fifteen. We're trying to figure out a time. We're gonna meet, they're gonna do the safety meeting at five thirty and we're gonna do a special meeting at six thirty to go over.
The twenty sixth or the twenty seventh, the vote.
We just decided it's gonna be on the twentieth, Wednesday, alright? I'll write that down.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to do a different meeting because, uh, and I, you know, I'm available on, uh, any of, well, obviously Memorial Day, the Senator's closing, but, which is the twenty fifth, so it's gotta be the twenty sixth or the twenty seventh.
Is it Memorial Day or when you're per-
You mean the twenty ninth?
That's Friday.
Oh.
I say the twenty seventh on Wednesday.
That's wrong.
I can't do that night.
Well, then, I say let's do it, let's do it this coming week.
Yeah, I say just let's do it this coming week. You know what? Make some questions and call Mr. Demoff and ask him if you have questions already.
Yep.
But all, all I was trying to say was he, he had stated that he was gonna give us things that we don't know or haven't known already. So, I, I was asking for some time to digest that. And if we have a regular meeting, I think that's the appropriate time to talk.
No, but we can't do it on the-
The special meeting is a regular meeting too.
I'm sorry, I don't have all that day, so.
Yes, but Rita's daughter's graduating.
I understand. What if we do it late the twenty eighth or?
So, wait a minute, we're all equal here. One's not here, one's not here. I agree. Why are we making a decision the night that we get to talk to the gentleman about the report? We didn't do that in any other. We said, no, we gotta wait, no, we gotta wait, no, we gotta wait. Months later, now we gotta make a decision same night? Nah, that's, that's inappropriate.
Well, I think there's, there's plenty of time. Everybody's read everything. You, you can ask them the questions you need to.
I've been read everything.
Well, you had the opportunity to have read everything.
Should we move the regular council meeting to the twenty seventh? Is that something we can do?
Um, except by ordinance, but, um, you ask, that's something you have to ask Mr. Dill. You, you cancel a regular meeting, then becomes anything other than the regular becomes a special.
As long as we notice it, right?
Yeah, absolutely. If you have everything on your, I'll be out of, you wouldn't have your department and you'd be like, nah, cause.
Alright.
We did that one first. Do that?
I don't have a problem with that.
That works. That way, everybody can have time to digest and everybody can be here on Wednesday to vote and we can, uh, enjoy it all again. Make that motion of the holidays before then.
The holidays on Friday, so.
May twenty seventh?
You know, I also wanna say, just so you can add, uh, you'll be getting your first read, uh, your general be happy because it'll, uh, that was, uh, the twenty eighth is the night we're gonna start introducing you, so just so you know.
Right, so it'll be a first reading.
Yeah, the first reading, hopefully just first reading on, a single reading on every one of them.
Are you talking about the charter, uh, mixtape?
Yeah, I think she's talking.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, are we?
So, we're gonna, we're gonna-
Yeah, that's apparently it.
Yes.
Cancel the one on the twentieth.
Six thirty work session, canceling the meeting.
Yeah, we'll announce it on the floor.
Do we have to, do we have to have a motion to, to cancel the meeting?
Yes, you do. We will do all that. You will, we'll be saying, because if you can't call in on a regular meeting, just say your regular meeting is not gonna be at all in your special.
Okay.
Alright.
Got it. Take care of that. Got it, okay. So, everybody, we're moving on now to ordinance number thirty eight, two thousand fifteen. I wanna say thank you to everybody, by the way. Sylvia, that is yours and, uh, I believe because, uh, we're, you guys are gonna be talking about that at the, after the safety meeting. That is the ordinance authorizing mayor to, um-
Yes, to revise ordinance policy.
The records policy. You said you want, we were supposed to talk about that at the safety meeting. Yeah.
I did.
We, yeah, that's, that's what everybody agreed on, um-
Well, that may be, you know, I never said, I never said that, but if you want to, we can.
I'm pretty sure that we were gonna have a discussion on the public records because Jan wanted to ask the question of the law department.
Well, let's just see, what's the difference? Why, why do we have a special if we have a state? What's different between the federal state law that we have a whole, I, I just wanna know what's different. And we've never highlighted, I wanted a special state occurs policy against the public, proposed policy. What's the difference? Why does it need to be amended?
Are you, are you asking then for the, uh, law department to be here next week at the, at the special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I don't know who wrote all this. I know Ms. Hampton from General Law, so I don't know if she wrote it, made it to them or who did the investigation, but who passed to speak because we need to make sure it matches and doesn't, it'll be very careful when you touch laws that exist at the state law.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and so it's this week, we're gonna be having a special meeting to meet with Ms., I'm sorry, Don, um, the, uh, what date is it now? Um, come, uh, December twentieth, May twentieth at five thirty, the safety meeting, Don, and then at six thirty, we're having a special meeting and having executive discussion with Mr. Demoff. The twentieth.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a, it's a Wednesday? Okay.
And the safety will include both Chiefs?
Yeah, the safety will include both Chiefs. I'm sorry, Don.
And the law department.
I know. Okay. Okay. And then so Sylvia?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna talk about that and then, uh, we can always do third reading at our, uh, on the twenty eighth, okay?
Yeah, special meeting.
That's fine.
Uh, ordinance number forty seven, two thousand fifteen. Uh, Mr. Eagle, could you please take that one? And that's an emergency ordinance replacing existing Macedonia- No, we're on second reading. This is the new one.
Just the new one.
The Macedonia occupancy program adopted by ordinance number one oh eight, two thousand seven, amended by ordinance number eighty one, two thousand nine, replacement with the new chap, chapter one ninety one to be known as the Macedonia occupancy jobs creation program. We're on second reading, Dave.
Do you think we could move to third reading on this?
Oh, sure. I don't have a problem.
Does everybody feel good about a third reading?
Okay, and then we also have, uh, the next one is ordinance number forty eight, two thousand fifteen, which is, uh, the one that we, uh, Mr. Deemer, um, made that conforms to the new one, the occupancy jobs creation program for Blackburn, Blackburn hubcaps and wheels. And, um, so we are, you're at second reading on that or you guys wanna go third reading?
I guess I'll go third.
Okay.
Which one are you talking about, forty nine?
Four, forty eight.
Forty eight, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's the one that'll be in conformance. The other one that we, we didn't, um-
Non-adoption changes, the other one says do you wanna apply it to Blackburn?
I misread Blackburn, Blackburn, forty, that's why I was confused.
Um, Sylvia is doing number forty eight?
Yep.
And then forty nine, I'll do that one. That's an ordinance confirming the appointment of Michael Black, position of the part-time service department. Um, Mr. Black has been, um, actually working with the service department for a while now and, um, I guess he's, uh, working out pretty good. So, he's doing a office office.
He's gonna be part-time. He's part-time at the Red Center. We're moving him over to this building so that he can, you know, give us help with charcoals because actually the foreman has been out doing charcoals all by himself. Is that how it's called?
So, he's gone from seasonal to part-time?
No, he, he'll be, yes.
Right. That's my-
Well, he wasn't seasonal, he was part-time.
What's his handle?
Oh, okay, alright.
Okay.
Is this, is this-
But he will be here rather than-
Yes.
Okay, well, so he's moving from seasonal.
So, we have more people to patch.
Right, that's fine.
Yeah, um, is everybody okay with three readings?
I don't have a problem with that.
Are you okay? Nick, Jan, are you okay? Alright, um, ordinance number fifty, two thousand fifteen.
Who's doing it?
Uh, I'm gonna do that one.
Alright.
Uh, Nick, um, could you take, uh, number fifty? And that's an emergency ordinance authorizing directing the mayor intentional to a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, enabling the city of Macedonia to participate in ODAG's contract for the purchase of roadsalt for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen winter. I think we should do three readings just to get it all the way, always have our phone.
Yes, be signed.
You need to have a choice.
Alright.
Snowmobiles.
Okay, so, moving on, ordinance number fifty one, I'll take that one. Ordinance amending the chapter thirteen twenty seven of the codified ordinances by replacing requiring rental property exterior inspections and fees. Could somebody please talk to us about this? I hope she, um, Mr. Land here.
Well, basically, we have the people who follow the rules paying the fees, the people who don't follow the rules not paying the fees, and that our ability to police it is limited, so why penalize the good people who live by the rules? So, it, well, it was Mike's suggestion, you know what, Mayor? We just can't do it fairly. Let's not have.
So, it's one of those that Golden always says to us, don't, laws are not fair, are they, and enforceable?
It was, it's not enforceable and-
Why isn't it enforceable?
That Mike would have to tell you, that was his explanation to me.
I could help you on this because I took a lot of pictures. I went around and I took a lot of pictures when this first ordinance first came to us. Macedonia already has an ordinance in place for everybody, okay, and that's regular homeowners and rental properties. And I took a whole lot of pictures and if you remember, I had a board here. The pictures, the rental properties look better than regular homeowners. You have, the ordinance already exists, so why, you know, why are you making a rental property pay a hundred dollars more a year? Because then they're gonna put that on the rental, on, on, on the person renting the house.
Not only that, but there's people involved, like for instance, Dave, there's somebody that owns a house, they're not living there. And then we go in after them and say, you know, you gotta do, well, my son's living there, he's supposed to be doing that. And it gets all real complicated where it's actually a relative living there and Mike explained it to me.
They need to enforce the law for everything.
It's, it's not fair.
But it sounds like you're not forcing evil.
They're, they're, well-
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're picking and choosing, but it seems like they're only zeroing in on the rental properties and it's just not right. It, it's really not right because-
He can explain it better if you, like, if you wanna go first reading, you're fine.
There's already, there's already an ordinance that exists. I say just let's get rid of the thing.
Well, it's up to them.
Well, I, I think, I think we could-
I think we should just knock this one out. This, this was Mr. Martin who originally put this together.
I remember what happened, honestly, and I am empathetic to your argument, Rita. I do think we could, we could be a first reading. I don't think, it's a rush. Does anybody else think it's a rush?
I know that there are families, like even when I rented, I rented on Shepherd Hill Boulevard and my rent was eleven hundred dollars a month. And, and I took very good care of my rental property and, you know, and if, if this ordinance existed back when I had that rental property, I wouldn't have been able to live with me and my kids because I wouldn't have been able to afford twelve hundred dollars. Because the landlord will put that on the rental, that cost.
Well, I, I, I tend to, you know, when it was originally proposed, I wondered why we were doing it and-
I can show you homes in Macedonia that are owned by, by people that don't take care of their property. They're awful looking. I can take you all over. I have taken you around.
Take a picture of my house now.
Okay, we, I generally agree with you. I'm just saying it wouldn't hurt to let people know that we are doing this.
Okay, first reading, why not?
Who's taking it?
I've been dying to get rid of this one. I don't know who brought this here, but I really like this one. Uh, I'm doing that one. I, I was so excited when I seen that one.
You're doing that one, true, okay.
Who, me? I don't have any here though. Not in this town. Not yet. Um, ordinance number fifty two.
Wait a minute, now, let's see. This one was-
Ordinance number fifty two.
Where is it? Number forty nine and fifty. This is fifty one.
Okay, ordinance number fifty two is an ordinance amending section three seven oh five oh three of the codified ordinances relating to snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles and off-purpose vehicles. Uh, Mr. Um, Golden, can you tell us what's going on with number fifty two?
Well, uh, John and I both went on site for a complaint and it, it was very, very obvious that this was a justified complaint. And then we went to try and do something to help, uh, make the situation better for the homeowner and we had no muscle. We had nothing in place.
Remember, I brought this up last fall because we had problems.
Now, now, there was a lot, a lot of work done by John, um, calling other communities. He, he just did an amazing job with Emira involved because she would have to prosecute and then also, uh, our law department. There was a lot of work that had gone into this. I don't know if it's gonna fly or not. I think it should have time for people to have their say.
Yeah, I agree.
But, uh, this, if, if you want, ever wanted something, this is the one that seemed to be, would've worked the best and explain why, Jan.
So, we could go first reading, give the public an opportunity to speak.
You kinda took a mish, mishmash of like other cities are doing, other counties, and tried to basically do the best we could and then throw it in council's hands and say, you guys talk to the public.
Go ahead, Dave. I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand. The, the, the gist of the ordinance is that we'll let people ride snowmobiles, yep, or not? I don't understand why we're doing this.
No, it restricts where they can ride.
It restricts, it's basically for ATVs is, is kind of adjusted out of all the beginnings, snowmobile, it's basically for ATVs and motorcycles.
So, so we're prohibiting them?
Form, yes, yes, form, we're prohibiting them from, people riding in their yard around and around and around. The last complaint that we had was the folks behind this, uh, complaint had basically a dirt track.
Okay.
That they ride and ride, they put a little jump in there and the dust.
Yeah, I understand. It would piss me off too, these people. So, here's my question.
Three feet, two hundred and fifty feet of that, five hundred feet of that, a hundred feet of that, and between ten and eight.
Are you done?
No, well, I was explaining it's, it appears you might not have brought it.
I did read it, but I'd like to ask some questions. What, it's, it, it applies to property less than an acre, is that, is that, or I was understanding?
My understanding to live a lot of property is you can't ride unless it's an acre.
That's right.
Alright, well, that's my point.
If you have more than an acre.
That, that's my point. One, just over an acre is still too small. You got, I think it's gotta be bigger. It's gotta be five or ten acres because even if you're two hundred and fifty feet away, it still sounds like hell.
Well, and that's why-
So, we need to make it stronger than it is.
You can. This was just a start.
I understand, but I'm voicing my opinion.
Dave, we didn't put in there, you have to have five acres or you have to have ten acres because theoretically, if you've got ten acres and I live next to you and you ride right up against my property line, whether you have ten acres or not doesn't make a difference. So, that's why we threw in the portion, uh-
I understand.
The, the distances in there.
Well, why would we not just have an ordinance that says you just can't ride these in the city? It's, it's, they shouldn't be in the city, period.
Because you, you have another faction of folks in the city that have these that want to ride them. Hence, with the law that you have is-
Hence, they should move to the country.
But they live here, you know, if people have multiple acres, now you're gonna tell them they can't do that, then, and I'd like to say you can't cut the grass except between ten and eight and five because of noise. I mean, you, you gotta be careful here because we have people with five acre lots, but people with four acres, we have people with-
And, and that's why we put the-
The people with, you know, less sound.
Now, you folks could very easily say a thousand feet, a half a mile, you could do whatever you want. This is what we started with. But here's one issue that, because folks have said, well, you know, lawn mowers and weeders and chainsaws.
Motorcycle.
Look, we're looking at a barking dog. It's not the volume because that's the other thing. Somebody said, well, let's have a, a, a discipline. You look at a barking dog, it's not how loud the dog is. It's freaking annoying.
Right.
And the same thing with these ATVs is they rev up and then down, then up, and that's what's annoying about it. When you cut your grass, it's a steady drone and it's done when you're done cutting the lawn. You're not gonna do it for hours on end.
You're gonna just do it as long as you actually have to, right.
So, I mean, it's, this is basically the struggle. You folks-
Alright, alright.
Have it stronger, make it weaker.
Well, I have a, like, I have a situation over by where I live. Uh, Rosely Corn's family have ATVs and they use them and they bring a lot of, you know, like they, you know, when they cut the grass, they do a lot of different stuff. They use them all the time for that purpose. So, like, you know, Rosely's son, Bobby, has two knee replacements, a hip replacement. He cannot get around and he uses the ATV to bring and help his mother out a lot. So, I know that this ATV rides between my property all the time, but I don't care.
But if, if you, if you run the ordinance, that is permitted.
Yes.
Okay, so.
In, in the ordinance, it says you can, uh, a lot of folks use them to pave the driveway, the running car.
Right, or mow your yard.
To do, uh, you know, drag a thing of, uh, dirt in the backyard or whatever.
Drag a dead body.
Drag a dead body in the backyard, whatever it is. Gardening, snow blowing, snow pushing, whatever. Uh, if, a lot of these folks go to other places to ride them, it's permitted that you can work on this thing in your yard, scoop it through your backyard, make sure the mechanical adjustments you made. So, there are provisions that you could do these things in there.
But not for recreational purposes and not-
Not for recreation first. Unless you have X amount of-
Property.
Property fee.
Which, which, uh, the majority of Macedonia's-
And Jan, I'm giving this ordinance to you to, um-
They're surprised by any other persons.
And you know what my, my, my- Do it beautiful.
I was surprised when I saw when they showed you the license for the shooting.
I'm just saying there is a whole bunch of places. They're not gonna be able to.
Camp House, period.
I got, I got a call about this one and I wanna give you the other side of what, what they were saying. I understand the woman you're referencing is pretty extreme and I can see how that would be a nuisance. But somebody called and noticed this and had heard about it and said, you know, when my son does well in school, he's laundry, has a mini bike around the yard. And to me, if, if you're paying three piece of property, you're not a nuisance to your neighbors and the reward of the child is to ride his mini bike around the yard, who are we to tell them they can't do that? But you gotta keep in mind that these people pay for their property. This is the kid's reward. This is what he enjoys. And it's a little mini bike. He's a little kid and that's his joy in life is riding that little mini bike around his yard. And we're gonna tell him, no, you can't do that.
But a mini bike is a whole lot different noise than, than an ATV.
Well, that leads into my next one. There's little mini four-wheelers now. And, you know, a lot of those little tiny four-wheelers, I can tell you.
Mini is a mini four-wheel.
I have a lawnmower that's very loud. I also have a car that's very loud, but-
Yes, you do.
And you're very loud.
To be honest with you, the, the dirt track was made-
Maybe we outlaw the track. How about that? I mean, no, you can't have a dirt bike track in your backyard. That I can see.
Yeah, but yeah.
They will protest, they're gonna have to define that.
When I drove on Eileen Drive, I had a mini bike. I drove that thing around and around. It's like, blew it up.
Of course, in buggy time.
You know, that's the complaint we get is folks who have lived here back in the day have said I could ride it back in the day and they can't do it now, but-
But, 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 there's, because now they're, remember, there's families with children that, you know, they like to ride around the yard. I mean, that's their property and I hate to have to be the guy to say, you can't do that on your property. Your child cannot ride that mini bike. And that's why I wanna be real cautious to everyone here and say, there are children in this community that enjoy this stuff.
I understand, but then you gotta look at the other side.
If it's a nuisance.
A half an acre acre lot and it's going for hours on time every day and they, they do it so much that it turns into a dirt track?
It almost seems like a, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Three at a time?
Three at a time. They, then these are people who aren't showing any common sense. I, I agree with you there. And they're not showing any consideration for other people. And you end up with a situation in which, how do you stop them and then not stop other people or just not being annoying? And I understand the point you're making. And I understand the point you're making and I actually am empathetic to it, but I've heard from people all over the city. This isn't just an isolated incident, unfortunately. There are other places where people have sent emails that say, the neighbor is running right along the property line, making a huge amount of noise all the time. Now, if somebody had any common sense, they'd say, well, we're gonna restrict that or we're gonna go to a location where there are, you know, they might have a bike track or something, but unfortunately, we're gonna have to deal with the reality that some people just have no common sense and I'm sure Myra would say, how are you gonna distinguish between the two unless you?
Maybe that's what we're doing. We, we try to think outside the box and not penalize everyone.
Well, okay, well, let's think of the idea.
This is a starting point. It's good, I get it. And I, I have to thank those people we're referring to, but I don't think we need to penalize everyone for...
Well, let's see what we can think of because I think, I...
Did you ever talk to the, uh, to the ones that have the three, um, ATVs? I thought maybe somebody was gonna stop and go see if they could try to talk to them.
It's been done. It's been done.
Yeah, unfortunate.
It's been done in the past.
Doesn't it work?
You know, it was very, very difficult because we looked at what we could do legally, what we could do with zoning, codified, you know, what could we do to help this lady and there was really nothing that was worth while. So we took the cast just to bring you something so that we're responding to a complaint, but we're not, this is not written in stone, any way, shape or form because of...
Well, I think if we, I, I agree with Nick said. I think we, we try to consider all the options here. Maybe if somebody's got some ideas and hopefully we can get some input from the residents with suggestions, that would be...
That's why we do the grading and invite them to kind of speak and think about it because you don't have a lot for one complaint.
Actually, there's two, I know, I got two complaints.
Public hearing.
Public hearing on the third, I mean, that would be, again...
And that would be fine, you know.
Can we schedule that for the next, the third meeting from now on?
Yeah.
You could ask for some, for the...
Public hearing, I'll...
Public hearing on the third meeting, third reading.
Third meeting for this, which one?
On our next be, uh, third meeting would be, but I know we have some other stuff coming up here, so...
In eleven, okay.
Chief, is there a, a way to, to somebody can put together, here's what an acre looks like, here's where it starts again? Because that's the question they're gonna have. Where the heck do I do it? Where am I allowed to do it? You know, because we said, it can't be a hundred feet from here, five hundred feet from there, two hundred and fifty feet from there.
You're gonna have to have...
Where am I gonna be?
Gonna be in your home doing that.
Depending on the size of the house.
Residential area, which I think is the...
Yeah, yes.
We have some property someplace to do this. As mentioned, Sylvia, when, when you guys passed the, uh, range ordinance, um, building full, a list of all the property that was greater than whatever, and I was surprised at the size of property. It was not, I never thought it would be a handle. It was sheets, not sheets. So, you know, it, it depends, you, you're gonna have to have several, like, three, four acres. It depends on how it's laid out, um...
For some people, you're never gonna be able to use them again because of the...
Well, they won't be able to use them at their home.
Because they can't be five hundred feet from any residential, residential structure now on the same lot. Is that the house or does that count their burden? Does it count their...
Residential structure.
It's gotta truly be a house.
I believe the law department is referring to the house.
Okay.
Now, Dave, if you don't abuse the privilege of driving, probably nobody would report you just like Rita said. One of those in her yard every day and she probably would never be treated. But when those people abuse it like Rita at night.
Yeah, when they are acting senselessly, yeah, you know, that happens, unfortunately.
Can you back the public hearing to eleven o'clock for? Would you like to start at seven?
Seven o'clock, that's our, the, the, the...
Well, seven o'clock and then we'll start our, our work session immediately thereafter. That's how we've done in the past.
The regular meeting, immediately.
Yeah, yeah, immediately, yeah, because we never...
I just wanna see if you wanted more than a...
What?
Work session two more.
Well, I, I love work, I love work.
I can see it in your hair today.
Yeah.
In, in some of the other communities, there was a lot, a lot, a lot of discussions, so...
Well, I can tell you, in all fields, yes, some people I know, that whole size of offense, it was a hot, 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 hot...
It would be nice to have people show up for a public hearing once.
Yeah, right, on subjects that totally care about it.
Who's doing the fifty-two?
Uh, Jan. Uh, ordinance number fifty-three, Dave, um, I'd like you to take that one. An ordinance appropriating money for payment of utilities at Longwood Manor House.
Can we, is everybody okay with the third reading on this?
Can we put a cap on that? I know we do in the past. Just to, to make sure we don't respond to that.
Well, it, it has a specific dollar in that.
I'm doing that, I'm sorry, missed it.
So, thousand.
Right.
And then what, okay, it's on topic, just need to take a review of what folks are doing in the month of this one.
And then we'll do three readings on that. And ordinance number fifty-four, Sylvia? That's an ordinance appropria- appropriating money for finance, computer maintenance in-house. What's that about?
Well, I don't know, only, yes, I got involved in the, uh, the secretary of private office seventy-five. Twenty-five hundred is one. Nice, you know, doing a budget. Think we should do it.
At seven o'clock.
It's seven o'clock, I can say, I hope it makes me...
Usually, yes.
Okay, did we have somebody who can speak to this?
Nick, I was gonna give Nick the motion granting permission for temporary liquor permit under the supervision of Recreation Director for the purpose of the Spirit of Macedonia Community Festival, June fourth through seventh, two thousand fifteen. Is that okay, Nick?
Doesn't that also include twenty-five percent off for all council members, please?
What's that?
Doesn't that also include twenty-five percent off for all council members?
Wow.
Okay, that's better.
I don't have to worry.
You, you...
When is Angela, when is Angela gonna be back?
And then, Sylvia, could you take, uh, canceling, uh, the council meetings, June twenty-fifth, July ninth and August fifteenth for the purpose of, of summer recess?
Could I ask, uh, you know, I personally have in the past, I wanted to do this number of recesses. Was, is there a strong feeling that we have to do this because, you know, I could see maybe July ninth, but...
Yeah, I think...
We've always done that and if we needed to have one, we need to, we would schedule. We've been pretty good for it.
But I think two would be more reasonable. And I understand, I think, three was the last, last time was the first time we did that, but it seems to me that we always come back and it's always a huge list of things to do and they gotta do it, it's gotta be done tonight. And the mayor is all in a dither. I'm not saying he shouldn't be because he hasn't had us here to do things that he needs to get done, so...
Well, why don't we keep July ninth and August thirteenth and take away June twenty-fifth then?
That would work for me.
That's okay with me.
Or if you wanna, well, why don't we, why don't we do it this way? We'll keep June twenty-fifth. Which, which day, can't you be there, Don?
Uh, June.
Okay, so we're, we're, we'll...
Can we do this first, too?
July, I'm not gonna be around hardly at all in July, I told you that.
So, we do the first two?
Barry, I gotta...
Awesome, and then we have the August meeting in, Mark.
Are we, I, I think, Jay, Rita just said July's bad for her, so why don't we do Ju- take July twenty-first off 'cause that, fifth off, 'cause that's the problem for the mayor and we'll take July, June.
And which one?
We're gonna take...
June, July.
No, she just said she can't do July. We're gonna take it. Right, and then we'll keep August thirteenth.
Right, all right. So you wanna cancel June twenty-fifth and July ninth, or you want?
No, I thought we were, yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to hear.
These are the ones, we're, we're gonna, um, July, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in Atlanta in July and I gotta go to Alabama, take Mark and Bobby there.
August, what happened to you?
August, and we're not, we're gonna not be here in July. We're gonna have one meeting in July, right?
Charter requires one meeting.
Yeah, yeah, one meeting, July ninth and, uh...
No, they canceled.
That's the one, you know, they want to cancel.
So we're canceling June twenty-fifth and July ninth.
Two weeks later.
No. No, we're, we're gonna cancel June, we're gonna cancel August thirteenth, right?
No, July ninth.
Hey, we're canceling July ninth and we're just canceling July, July ninth and that's it?
Yeah.
No, June twenty-fifth and July ninth and we will have a meeting in August.
Okay, whoa, whoa, no, we're gonna have a meeting in August.
You're only canceling two meetings, June twenty-fifth and July.
Well, I don't think we should cancel two meetings. I think we should only cancel one. And, I mean, we should only, we should, instead of taking off three, we should only take off two, whichever two you want.
So June twenty-fifth and July ninth will cancel and then we'll, we'll, we'll come in in August?
Yes, go.
Okay, Sylvia, you got there?
I do. After this about a combination, it's amazing.
Which one again, did you say?
June twenty-fifth and July ninth were canceling.
All right, that's fine. We'll be here in August.
She said, she said no.
I don't care.
We're only canceling...
We'll be here August thirteenth, everybody.
We're gonna be here, two meetings in August, one in June, one in July.
Got it.
Sylvia, do you ever go anywhere?
Are you complaining? You know, I'm...
I'm complaining, I make a horrible...
She wants to break into your house.
Yeah, right.
I'm joking, okay, that would be it.
Now, we have those motions.
Well, you're doing the one motion, Sylvia, canceling the two meetings.
No, no, I'm talking about the motions, about the special meeting we have to...
Oh, yeah, I already, yeah, I already...
You got that all covered?
Yeah, I got, so make, um, I'm gonna make the motion, um, to schedule a special meeting on May twentieth at six thirty and I'm gonna make a motion of canceling the camp, camp council meeting on the twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth.
And moving it to twenty-seventh.
That's a special meeting on the twenty-seventh.
And then you'll be calling a special meeting on the twenty-seventh, but you'll be acting on all the regular items.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, I'm...
Nick's gonna pull this. What?
Okay, everybody, I'm, I'm done. Does anybody have anything they wanna say?
Seven o'clock there, so it's eight o'clock here.
You guys are talking about the caps. Okay, does anybody have anything you wanna go over, Pauline? We got fifteen minutes.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Jan, you have anything? Dave, you got anything?
The cemetery meeting, the last five minutes?
Yes, five minutes. And we can't start, because there's... Very early, so we have, all have to go by for Brianna now.
So, all my council members have their...